Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Bienvenidos a todos. Roll call, please, Evelyn.
Trustee Weekly. Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marcus.
Here. Again, welcome to another Redwood City School District meeting. It's actually nice to see a full house after a very long time, so welcome, everyone. And then just a few things, so for those that need translation, si necesita traducción, por favor, llame al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de número. If you're speaking to the board, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues and concerns whether or not the issue is or are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card at the entrance and give it to the assistant here, Evelyn, and if you wish to speak to the board on a subject that is on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes. However, because we do have a lot of people, I do want to just go over and read really quickly the Board Biulet 9323. It says that individual speakers should be allowed three minutes between one and 10 people that wish to address any topic, the board may elect to allow three minutes. Should 11 to 20 people wish to address any topic, the board may elect to allow two minutes per speaker. Should more than 20 people wish to address any topic, the board may elect to allow three, I mean, I'm sorry, one minute per speaker. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation. So at this time, obviously, when oral communication comes in, we will know how many people actually want to speak. And then, let's see. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No. The, um, I wanted to, the Board Policy Committee we met this week, and we need to pull 9.2, which is the Health and Welfare Benefits. There's a few changes that we need to make to that, and then we'll bring it back for first reading. So just pull that off. And then, Dr. Baker, I really, I think we needed to pull the Orion discussion, right? Because, go ahead.
There was a family emergency that Ms. Rivera was not able to be heard this evening.
Right, so actually, I guess that it's a discussion item, but we won't, we'll just be focusing on Adelante Selby. Yeah, okay, great.
Hello. Should we make clear for any parents who come and they've comments about Iran that they have any time to speak?
She just did that. Yeah. Yeah, I'm very.
Yeah, no problem.
And if it's not clear, it's under oral communication and people don't know, yeah.
So with that said, are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, can I please get a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Weekly.
Aye.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Vice President Lawson.
Aye.
President Marcus.
Aye.
We have reported on closed session from January 20 or another decision.
Okay, so then just going back to call to order under item 1.2, report out on closed session from January 20. We receive information and no decision was made. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Can I please, actually, we just made the motion to approve the agenda, sorry. Is there any oral communication?
Yes. Peter Cohen.
Can I, I was gonna.
Make decisions from the minutes at a time.
I think some of our people were under 9.2, so there's one, and I hear some other people remember.
So currently, I have 26 online and one physical card, so 27 so far.
We, we can, we, just before, just before, under the brown neck, you do not have to have your name on the speaker's card if you don't want to. But with council, coun- coun- council addendum here, it's optional, but if you need a response back, you will, will need to find out who you are and your phone number. Okay? There you go.
Perfect, so then with that said, being that there's 27 speakers, then would we want to come to the concise to go ahead and limit the minutes to be one minute?
I'm sorry, how many are there?
27?
Absolutely, yeah, because we have a lot to cover tonight.
Okay.
But let's also consider encouraging speakers who are largely mirroring the comments of prior speakers to say, I agree, or just in otherwise, provide concise support.
Correct.
Thank you, I will try to be as quick as possible. Thank you all for.
Well, hold on, turn on the mic.
On the right side.
Right side, there you go.
All right, thank you all, thank you all for your service and your work here. I want to thank the staff of the district for correcting the enrollment staff who's we had for school of choice things and doing it so quickly. In this district, we're really lucky to have amazing immersion programs. And I think what I want to highlight is, I think the opportunity that this district has to really lead the state in rolling out those immersion programs. The California Department of Education has set a goal that by 2030, half of all kindergarten through grade 12 students will participate in programs leading to proficiency in two or more languages. And I also note that TK expansion continues and by 2025, we will have require, a need to provide TK for all four-year-olds in the district, so matching the same number of kindergarten classes that we have as TK classes. And I think what I would really encourage the district to do is take advantage of the opportunity to provide TK for as many immersion students as possible for families like mine that are learning non-native language in our house, in our, the target language is not native to our family. TK has been enormously helpful in preparing my children for kindergarten. So I would love to have the opportunity for everyone.
Your minute is up. We really appreciate your comments. And then with this, so that everybody else knows, as you guys make comment, we as the board are not able to get back to any communication. But again, if you state your name and a phone number or an email, somebody from the staff or a board member get back to you from your comments. Thank you.
Alexis Betz.
Hello, hi, my name is Alexis Betz. I have a kindergartner in the Mandarin immersion program and arising TK, also in the Mandarin immersion program. I think that it is a really exciting opportunity to have this many people sign up for the program because it means that we are on a path to a healthy program where we can have enough students all the way through eighth grade. And so I would really like to ask the school board to capitalize on this and to accommodate everybody who wants to be in the program because we have the opportunity to have a better program and to be really on the frontier of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan O'Reilly.
Okay, hey, everybody, thanks so much for all that you do. I know that you're volunteers and I'm, I appreciate you guys so much. I'll make it quick. I, I have been working with underserved families at Orion or at MI program for several years. And something that I've noticed is that the combination of goals on our, on our campus and the scores that are so differential mean that our underserved families don't get the help that they really need and they are like really suffering. I would love to talk to, I could talk to you about this for hours. I know I have a minute, but I'm here with some of my families. You'll see them on Zoom tonight. And so I'm just asking the district to consider a different structure that serves both of these programs better because, you know, you're going to hear from a lot of families that will say, we need TK or we want a private school. But there are a lot of families that really need TK, that extra year of Mandarin immersion in order to succeed in this program. So I'm hoping that you'll hear from them tonight, and I'm hoping that we can expand this conversation at some point and that you guys will consider a different structure. And also, please, please, yet another year has gone by that we have not applied for the TCLP program that would add another headcount of a teacher for our program that wouldn't support those students, so I hope you will consider that.
Thank you.
So I want to stop.
Kyle Zipes. Kyle Zipes.
We're looking. I don't, it's not on Zoom either.
Just move with the next one.
William Dennis.
He's on Zoom. There he is.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the time and I just want to add my support for the importance of the sibling priority for all these programs. We, we have a daughter that's three years old and really hoping that she can join her brother in the same school. So that, you know, we can essentially optimize our drop-off, so we can drop both kids at the same time and also just so they can go to the same school together. So that was my comment. I just want to emphasize how important I believe the sibling priority factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
You will have to make that decision at this point in time. We have not entertained that, but it's up to you at this point in time. Uh, I don't know.
Dipika Germany.
Hi, I'm Dipika's husband, Shri. Firstly, I would like to thank you folks for having this Mandarin immersion program and giving us opportunity to voice our opinion. I'm here to advocate to have an additional TK class for Mandarin immersion. We really love the program from all the schools we toured. And we are in waitlist right now for the TK program. I think this, having an additional one year for our daughter for Mandarin immersion would be super helpful, if that's a possibility. I would, you know, I would highly, highly, you know, it's an humble request, so.
Thank you.
Tina Tura Tutin Chung.
Hi, everyone, I'm Tina. Thank you so much for taking the time. I also wanted to advocate for the Mandarin immersion TK program. I think a lot of students can benefit from that. My son knows a little bit of Mandarin, but he would really benefit a lot from, yeah, he's there, he's here right now. And so I think, yeah, it would really help our community if there were additional classes that were open. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brani Lee.
Thank you for hearing our comments on supporting, continuing and expanding the Mandarin immersion program for a public school system especially. My husband and I live and work in Redwood City, and we believe that bilingual Mandarin education is a necessity for our daughter, who's an incoming kindergarten. It not only teaches students that respect for different cultural perspectives is necessary, but it challenges them to navigate between two very distinct languages, which strengthens academic skills and builds adaptiveness and resilience. So I worked in the education technology sector myself, and these are critical ingredients that are, that are needed to better motivate students to, to prepare themselves to graduate successfully and begin fulfilling careers. We researched options very thoroughly, and we felt that the Redwood City Mandarin immersion program has, it's as high quality as the private Silicon Valley immersion school that we've sent our daughter to for the last two years. I think the student academic data speaks for itself. The Redwood City Mandarin immersion students have performed well above the targets in almost every category. So just, I think it's a really important program and like continued expansion, especially in the TK. Very necessary, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Jackie Chan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jackie Chan. I don't do Kung Fu, although I wish I need to, because I got three little ones at home, all under six. My daughter Caroline, she's in kindergarten MI, and my son will be hopefully in TK next fall. And the K and the TK admission process has been a crazy roller coaster ride for me, and I really want to share my experience because I think it is representative to other families who may be waitlisted as well. And like many, we were on the fence for both MI and alternative school. And we convinced ourselves that MI was worth the commitment. But we were so disappointed last year when Caroline was placed so low on the waitlist. And then I have to like make myself feel comfortable with the plan B. And then by the time when a second kindergarten class opened up, I kind of felt like I'm too good for MI already. And then, but if it weren't for other families who are in MI, I felt like I would have.
Unfortunately, your time is over, so.
I'm sorry, okay. Can I just say one last thing?
Please.
You, you know. Just one thing, please, okay. So I think we definitely need to, like, two TK MI classes and three kindergarten MI classes. And I'm going to email you my speech because I spent like hours on this.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I'll just let you know, we, we read all the emails, so feel free to send us that, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry we had to shorten it. It's just that if we give everybody three minutes, three minutes times 30 speakers is an hour and a half, and we have other business, so thank you.
Julia Salas Niva.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry, just.
Yes.
And just to keep this short, but I already sent an email and my son, Jeff, did get off the waitlist into the kindergarten program. But I have to say, my husband and I toured a lot of schools at, in Redwood City, and I've been following along. I work with on the underserved population in Redwood City as well. And I have to say, this is, I am just astounded that such a diamond or jewel, I'm not sure, language and exists within the red. I know all the other programs are wonderful, but nothing quite matches the academic like rigor, the, the, the levels there are way above state levels. Like when touring other schools, they're like, well, we teach to the state levels and like, you know, kindergarten, like they're counting to like 20, and then like most children in the Bay Area, you can count above, at and above. And what we need is to be able to bring our children up to a much higher standard, standard of academic levels to, so they could succeed. And this is a public school that offers this access to, like, many kids need this, I feel, yeah. I would expand the kindergarten program if possible and the TK as well. Thank you.
Chris Southwick. Chris Southwick. Sheila Chan. Sheila Chan. Alex Oh.
Everyone, I'm Alex. My child is attending kindergarten at the Mandarin immersion program this fall. I'd like to speak out in support of expansion of the TK and kindergarten programs. I was lucky enough to grow up in a bilingual household. I've come to realize that a lot of the values and standards that I aspire to, like open-mindedness, intellectual curiosity, empathy for others. I think I have strong underpinnings in an early childhood immersion in more than one language. I, as an adult, I didn't appreciate this at the time. I mostly complained about having to go to Chinese school, and my parents didn't speak good English. But as an adult, I feel like language is fundamental to the human experience of connection. And the more we are exposed, the many forms that this connection can take. I think we, we begin a broader understanding of ourselves and of each other. So I hope we can expand the Mandarin immersion program at Orion. I ask you guys to do, to, to support this, not just for the benefit of our children and our own community, but also for the communities that they will inhabit in their futures.
Thank you.
Angela King.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Angela, and my son is on the waitlist for the MI Mandarin immersion TK program. I'm here to advocate that additional MITK classes be added so that all the parents, including myself, who want this Mandarin immersion education for their kids could have the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sam Christiansen.
Go ahead. Sam, go ahead, unmute yourself.
Hi. Sorry, hope everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, my daughter is going into the Mandarin immersion program, we hope. Just wanted to say that this is really the only program we're interested in. And otherwise, we'll probably be sending her to private school. So we just really hope that it works out, and we're also very interested in expanding the TK Mandarin immersion program. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Terry.
Hello, and first of all, thank you so much for the work that you do. I really appreciate you guys being here as school board members. It's, it's a lot of work and you don't get much thanks, so thank you. So my problem is, first of all, with the number of classes, but also more importantly with the lottery itself, which I believe is not fair to all children in our district. Specifically, there's the Odyssey preschool, which is on the site of the Orion campus. If you go to that school, you pretty much automatically get admitted to the kindergarten and the TK program. I did not know that. I don't know how many other parents in this room knew that. Odyssey preschool costs $1,700 a month. I don't know how many people can afford that. I know for our family, it was prohibitive with two students. The other issue I have with the lottery is the TK preference. I understand that a lot of people are here trying to get into the TK program. My child is going to kindergarten, summer birthday, not eligible for TK. These people in this room, if they get into TK, or if they're allowed to remain on that waitlist next year, who is going to be in that kindergarten class? Only the students in TK. There will not be spaces for other students if you have two TK classes. That's not fair to half the students in Redwood City. So I just want you to keep that in mind and reform the lottery so that it's equal for every child or make more classes. Thank you.
Jasper Chen.
Hi, thank you for making Redwood City an awesome place for kids. I've been here 15 years, working, living, and now raising a family. And it's amazing, it's, yeah, it's transformed, so thank you. I hope you will just lean into that and will invest in and take big risks for those children. And it might mean trying to invest in expansion, and maybe you can get more economy of scale in by expanding. You have a beautiful campus now. So that is my hope, that we can see this flourish and build a community where the children can find each other and speak to each other and grow their skill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Lee Maraz.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Anna Limaraz. Soy originalmente de México, mi familia también. Decidimos entrar al programa de Mandarín para aprovechar la diversidad del área de la bahía. Sin embargo, consideramos que ha sido un poco difícil el programa especialmente para estudiantes de bajos recursos que no podemos pagar programas después de la escuela en Mandarín. Y, y a pesar de los esfuerzos que hay en, para la, para la, para la profes, que ejerce la profesora hacia los estudiantes, no, no hay suficiente soporte por parte del distrito y por parte de la escuela para sostener el aprendizaje en Mandarín para estudiantes trilingües, digamos, o que son bilingües desde el hogar. Y básicamente, gracias.
Gracias.
Do you want to translate for the audience?
I'm like, I.
So she's very grateful for the.
I know, because I was like, I was listening, but I'm.
I'll do my best to paraphrase that. So she would say that she's from Mexico and that she is noticing that it's a challenge to offer the Mandarin immersion program for families that have low income. And it's a challenge because there's not a lot of availability. So she was also requesting to make this progress more accessible, I think.
Right, and also the other part about it not being accessible, it's, there's an after-school program, from what I understood, and it costs some dollars, and they're.
Exactly.
Paid that amount of money, so that was the other piece.
TCLP. Keith Simmons.
Thanks to the board for taking the time to listen to public comment. I think that's so important in our community. So I'm going to flip things around, because I only have a minute. I asked the board that you consider expanding the policy of sibling priority for TK. If it doesn't make sense to fragment families with kindergarten-age siblings, I don't see why it would make sense to fragment families with TK-age siblings. And I would also ask that you expand the MI grades to two TK classes and three kindergarten classes. And it's really immersion that I believe in, so I think you should also take a really hard look at Adelante. I understand they also have a waiting list. These are some of the most formative years for language acquisition, so it's very important that students can enroll at a young age. So now I'm going to go to the beginning, and you can just cut me off when I run out of time. So I have two daughters. My oldest, Sierra, attends Orion Mandarin immersion. She's taught me how to count to 10 in Mandarin. It was super awkward, but she's patient. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Heather Stamper.
Hi there, thanks so much for taking the time. I have two kids, my daughter Clara in second grade, and my son is joining the TK Mandarin immersion program. And I echo a lot of the things that were said tonight. I am supportive of expanding the TK and K classrooms. One unique point I'd make is that my daughter joined during COVID kindergarten, and we have gone from two kindergarten classrooms to one and a quarter to now, as people move on to North Star, you know, less than one. And I worry about the snowball impact of people leaving the program and really hope that we can create a more stable base and bigger classes so that we can continue the program on through middle school and high school. Because my daughter loves it, and she's gotten such great benefit of it. And as of now, she hopes to continue on to it, and I assume my son will be similar. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Melé Rosayo.
Hi, thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Melé, and our family have two children in the district, one in second grade and one in third grade in the Mandarin immersion program. Both my children have learning disabilities and have IEPs. And Maya Rose needed help in Mandarin with speech and reading and asking for funding of. and asking for funding of more help for the Mandarin immersion programs, like my daughter that have difficulty in learning. I'm asking for also for funding for extra TK because she would have benefited from that. We don't have a resource teacher in Mandarin. We don't have enough aid in Mandarin for math. And I was pressured that the only solution for Maya was to drop the MI. I'm glad I did not because I love this program and I'm thankful for that. And my parents, they're very supportive and thank you very much.
Richard Pond.
Everybody, I'm Richard. Thank you so much for having us. I have two daughters. I have a third grader in the MI program and I have another one who is also on IEP, is going to be joining the kindergarten and the MI program. We're very fortunate for that. We moved it to Redwood City six years ago and we weren't sure about schools. We heard about the MI program. We took a bet and a risk coming here and it's like the best decision we ever made. Our third grader is thriving. She loves it. She loves the language. We can't teach her at home. Exposure to so many different friends and cultures and she's having a great time. As hope that we can expand the program so that other families with students that want to experience same thing can come into the program and thrive as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mica Banera. Mica. Anne Lau.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Again, thank you for the board. And actually, I don't have much more to add from the previous speakers. And we were lucky that we, my twin boys were able to get in K after second round. They off the waitlist. So we're thrilled. But again, I think no parents want to go through this process of up and down, emotional up and down. So I'm thoroughly interested to hope to support the expansion of the TK as well as K. Thank you.
Sarah Rutherford.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll keep this short and sweet. So I have two children who are in Mandarin immersion, a fourth grader and a first grader who was actually came in as a TKer. I've been through the waitlist wait as well, and it's really rough. And I am just here to ask for some consistency between the rest of the sibling policy and TK, particularly in lieu of the rollout of universal TK and where TK will be available to all four year olds in just a couple of years. And so it, it makes a lot of sense for the, the board policy to be consistent across the grades. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tiffany Chow. Bev.
Hi. Oh, hi. I was just adding to what a lot of people have said. You know, my husband and I lived in Palo Alto and then once we had our son, we're looking to get more space. And one of the reasons we moved to Redwood City was because we were very excited that he would have the opportunity to join such an amazing Mandarin immersion program. So I'd say that is actually the reason we moved to Redwood City was in order to have him be at the school. We enrolled him in Odyssey for next year and then hopefully the kindergarten class. We're growing increasingly concerned that there might not be room for him when he gets, eventually gets into kindergarten age. So as many people have mentioned, would really encourage the expansion of this program because I think it attracts people to the city. And I do think that there, you know, if we couldn't get our son into this school, we would, you know, potentially even move to a place where we could have him in Mandarin immersion. But obviously, we'd prefer to stay here because we love this city. We've grown to really love our neighborhood and our neighbors and our community. So please consider expanding the kindergarten and TK and elementary school program for Mandarin immersion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shang Yin.
Hello, my name is Shang Yan. I'm logging to my wife's account, whose name is Chong Yan. So very briefly, we currently have a first grader in Mandarin immersion. And she has a little brother who we hope can also get into Mandarin immersion again in a couple of years. I think we've heard there's a lot of interest in attending the program. And I suppose what I would ask is, what do we, as the parents or community, can do further to help move this along? Because there's a lot of interest here. So if the board could help guide us as to what we need to do, whether or not it's writing letters perhaps to the county or other resources, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia, who stated she's online as Rafael. Julia Feng.
Thank you. They already did.
You already did that. Did they, did they raise their hand? Sometimes it's easier to find them that way. Julia, can you please raise your hand?
Is it there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I wasn't sure whose student account I was under. Sorry about that. So thank you so much for all the service that you guys do in our district. I just wanted to make two points. One, you know, in a district with declining enrollment birth rates that kind of recently right-sized a few years ago, can we really afford to artificially cap school demand and choice? I, I think, you know, you've heard from a lot of other speakers. And I think I would just say I really second, you know, a lot of the things that have been said. But the, the one thing that didn't kind of get made, and I will share that point, is that, you know, when we're talking about an immersion program, basically, you know, learners have one or two, like, small windows of opportunity to join at TK or Kinder. And so if there's any way we could actually, you know, come together and see what we can do. I'm sorry, Julia, but your time is up. Oh, already? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Sanket Doshi.
I would like to start out by thanking the board for their, for their service. I have a daughter who is currently waitlisted for TK at Orion Mandarin immersion. For someone who has already gone through an immersion program in India when I grew up until fourth grade, I do believe there was a lot of benefit and I would like to provide the same benefit to my daughter. Between the preschool preference, siblings preference means we just have one daughter. I, with the number of spots, I don't even know if we even had a chance after applying. And I would like to advocate to see if we could add a class. When we went for the Iran tour, one of the things stood out was people from Palo Alto, San Carlos were coming and they were, they were like, we really want to apply for this program. And, you know, being in the district, I really feel and being public school advocates and believing in public schools, we really think we would like to have an opportunity to send up kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Guy, guys, sorry.
Hi there. My name is Phil. I'm a small business owner in Redwood City. Thank you for the opportunity there. Thank you for creating such a great program. And I think, I think the amount of interest and the benefit to our community and society in general is not disputable. I would just ask that you please expand the program in every way possible. And like other people have said, let us know as a community how we can help make that happen. Thank you.
Yeah.
Omales, Omalis Villanueva.
¿Me escuchan?
Sí, sí, señora.
Sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Omalis Villanueva. Tengo tres niños en el programa de mandarín. Y la razón que estoy aquí esta noche es para pedirles a ustedes su apoyo. Necesitamos que nos, a las familias latinas que estamos en el programa, que nos brinden más apoyo porque para nosotros es muy difícil apoyar en mandarín a nuestros hijos. Y muchas veces esa es la razón por la cual ellos se atrasan y como no entran en las listas con detalle para ver que niños van atrás, a veces parecen invisibles. Tenía una sobrina mía que estaba en el programa y su familia decidió salir del programa porque no tenían suficiente apoyo. Son invitaciones hoy que nos apoyen, que eliminen las trabas que tenemos para tener servicios de tutoría dentro de la escuela y de esa manera traer a nuestros hijos a nivel de grado y tener éxito en este programa que está maravilloso. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Oh, Excel does. I feel that Excel, go ahead, translate. Go ahead, Excel. Excel. Quieres traducir? Excel. Excel, quieres haber otra vez, si puedes, hacerlo. Gonzalo, I guess she can't get in. Oh, she's kidding.
Hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah. Sorry about the technical difficulties. Yes, I will interpret the comment. Okay, the comment was like, good evening, my name is Hola, es Villanueva. I have three children in the Mandarin immersion program. And the reason why I'm here tonight is to ask to you guys, your support. We need for the families, for the Latino families that were on the program to give us more support because for us, it's very hard to, to support in mandarín for our children. And thank you very much. That's the reason why they fall behind. And because, you know, since they don't, they don't go in the list in details to see which children goes to class. Sometimes they seem invisible. I had a niece that was in the program and her family, her family decided to pull her out of the program because they didn't have enough support. So that's, so I, I want to ask for you guys to support us and to eliminate all of the issues that we have to have tutoring services inside of the school. In that way, bring our children to, to grade level and to have success in this program, which is marvelous. Thank you very much.
No more speakers. Okay, thank you, everyone that spoke. And moving on with the agenda. We are, let's see, can we please get a motion to approve the bond program consent items?
Thank you. I'm Milliana Harrison. I'm a mom to a TKer and first grader in the Mandarin immersion program. Thank you all for being here and thank you, Dr. Baker, for introducing all of our performers at the Redwood City Lunar New Year Fair. And as you mentioned there, we are so excited about this program growing. Obviously, you have a ton of parent support here and we want two TK classes and we want three Kinder classes. And just let us know how we can get there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind parents, those parents that I responded back to your emails and the board was copied. I said by the end of workday Friday, you would get a decision. So hang on, that's all I'm going to say. I, I still have some individual, individual meeting and two by two meetings to go through yet this week. And so Mike will be talking individually as opposed to two by two. So hang on by the end of workday, my, well, not the end of my workday, but like at five o'clock. You shouldn't have a response. Doesn't end if I, so by five o'clock, you should have a response that will go out to the entire community. But we still have to do our individuals.
Very quickly, Kyle Zipes from earlier is on now.
Oh.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody. And sorry for missing my turn before. I appreciate all your time tonight and, and all of you, listening to all of us. What, what I want to say is that the, the idea that our children's future and their education is decided by a lottery, I think is not, is not acceptable. It's, it's an awful feeling to know that the school that you think is best for your child might be out of reach because of the luck of the draw. But I, I feel that our goal should be every family that wants to attend this school should be allowed to. And we should accommodate them and find a way to do that. And I think it, it seems obvious to me that the MI program is growing faster than the rest of the district. And that's great and we should encourage it. And if it means finding its own campus, I think that's something that the board should investigate so that every family who wants to attend should be able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item six, bond program consent items. Can I please get a motion to approve?
I'm moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Weekly.
Aye.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Vice President Lawson.
Aye.
President Marcus.
Aye.
And then moving on to discussion items. Nine point one is school plan and student achievement for Adelante Selby.
So we'd like to invite our Adelante Selby staff to move on up to the table up here in front. And you can sit down and put the microphone down on the table so that you can be comfortable.
They're going to get up one at a time and talk at this. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so they're going.
My Apple Watch says it's time to stand up. So before they get started, I'm going to be sharing the screen and they'll be giving me an indication when to move the slides forward. But this is a change from the original SIPs presentation that you had where the, the sites have now been asked to condense their information into a small number of slides, which isn't easy when there's a lot to say and an amazing story to tell. But this is our first go at this. And so we appreciate all the work and the hard work that went into consolidating the information into these slides and then putting a ton of information into the slides at the end that all have links so that you can see additional information and that you had a chance to see that so that there will be a presentation and then time for questions after that.
Okay, so I mean.
Warren, would you like to introduce your staff?
Yeah, good evening, buenas noches a todos. Warren Cedar, I'm the very proud principal of Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School. And I'm here tonight with my admin team. It's a pleasure to work with them every single day. So I'm very appreciative of them. Patrice Alcoser, our assistant principal. Hey Patty. And Jose Luna, our community school coordinator. So as Liz mentioned, our goal is to talk quickly this evening. And we have an overview of our school site plan, which you had a, I don't know, a 90-page version of this. And we're trying to fit in a few slides. And it's an overview of our three goals in our SIPs, in a lens of the, using the lens of MTSS, three tiers, right? So the tier one is what everybody gets. Tier two, more leveled support and then needier supports for, for level three. So I'm going to be going over goal one. Patty will be doing goal two. I'll come back at goal three. Then we get more of the fun stuff with the school events, parent engagement, student voice, community school. So Jose gets more of the fun slides at the end of the report. So in goal one, we're talking about something I think we do a very good job of creating a supportive, positive, safe learning environment at the school and in our classrooms. And really, the story, if we're telling our story, was about three and a half years ago started when the schools came together, Adelante and Selby. was about three and a half years ago started when the schools came together, Adelante and Selby. And prior to the pandemic and we had to quickly unite ourselves under immersion and the dual immersion model and that vision that our students would be fully bilingual, passing the AP test in high school, getting all those meta cognitive benefit, cognitive benefits and being able to participate in a, in a global society. And we needed to get to know each other. So that's kind of this area, right? So we had an emphasis on building relationships from day one. Creating classroom communities where we get to know each other, talk about our feelings using the castle framework. Establishing peace corners every single classroom. We're moving right along and then COVID hit, you remember, March 13th Friday? And we all sent home and then we had to come back again, right? Just last year, quite honestly, last April. And we had to do a lot of that stuff all over again. So I think in terms of tier one, and then we have to, so we're looking at our discipline and our attendance in this area, those are the data points. Tier one, what we do, I think, started to talk about it, I got a little bit ahead of myself. This focus on building relationships starts day one. Number one, it's the caring teaching staff. I like to say we have warm demanders, we're warm, students need to know we love them, but we're also pushing them and being rigorous in our expectations. And community building, I talked about already. When you talk about discipline or expectations, we have a strong PBIS program at the school with clear expectations for the students. Their alebrihes, where the alebrihes are expected to be safe, responsible, respectful, friendly and caring and focused and ready to learn. So boom, we can catch you being good. Good job. Thank you for being respectful. They get that alebrihead ticket. Instead of stop doing that, stop doing that, we want to catch more students being good. That's kind of the quick idea. And then we do have behavior problems, not a ton of them, but when they happen, we have a referral to Patty or myself typically because something happened. We talk with our students, we have them do a reflection page. We might have a mediation where they use iMessages and talk out the problem. We might have to call their parents to tell them what happened. And they might have some kind of consequence. So that's kind of our, our system for managing behavior at the school. Those are all tier one strategies, a lot more as you can see in the SIPSA, the formal SIPSA. Tier two, last year, one of the great things with the COVID money, we got a full-time counselor. So having Vicky Neves, who's a former wonderful kindergarten teacher, she's very visible. And then through our MTSS leadership team, we have referrals for students that need more support. So she's established a number of different groups, small groups in around different areas. So grief, somebody's a death in the family or a family friend, they're really suffering from that trauma, they can go to a group. Divorce, anger management, anxiety, those kinds of things. So those are kind of examples of a tier two. We also added with COVID money and LCAT money, a part-time TOSA that's in charge of MTSS. So when teachers are struggling with behavior, students not moving in the right direction, she can help teachers set up parent meetings, that would be the first protocol, right? Possibly leading into student study team meetings, 504 meetings if they have a medical reason for not, not moving in the right direction. And, and, and that's what her job is. Tier three, we actually have a great partnership with One Life and we have a therapist. So she delivers actual one-on-one therapy for, for our needier students. Go ahead, Liz. So I don't believe in suspensions, quite honestly, unless it's something very egregious. So we would, we met this target. So I think all the strategies that I talked, oh, I'm on, I'm sorry. Oh, I missed, I missed the slide, sorry. We met that target. So now we're going to move on to attendance. Oh, I didn't miss it. Okay. Okay. You guys say that louder so they can hear you at home. No. So this, this goal we did meet, I'm happy to say. In terms of suspensions, I think I'm also very proud that we showed a 5% improvement on the panoramic survey that every, that students feel there's at least one caring adult, you know, they have a strong relationship with them. And I believe strongly, it's not just teachers and we have wonderful teachers, it could be anyone there, the custodian, the cafeteria staff, our librarian, anybody in the office. I believe that always in every school that it worked at. So I think one of the things we're, what we're considering changing and I'm excited about under Jose and Vicky's leadership, the counselor, we're training our student council, fourth and fifth graders to be peer mediators, mediators, they've just finished their, their training and they're going to be out there. They're taking it very seriously to help out at recess times during fourth and fifth grade lunchtime. And also there's an overlap there where they can go out during the second, third grade lunchtime because that, the unstructured time is where we have more of the discipline problem. So they're, they're really psyched and we, we're hoping to see that change. Now you go on to the next one. Okay, so attendance. Big surprise, we did not meet this goal last year. In the context of COVID, right, we were staying home. 28% of our students were chronically absent last year. I don't think that's a surprise. A number of teachers were absent. Myself was, you know, we were absent last year, we were told to stay home, right, with, with COVID. So I don't think that's a surprise. I think there's some great data this year to show some improvement. I'm not going to go into all the great things we do. I do want to point out on this slide though, in, it's really between tier one and tier two because it's not everyone that can access it, but we have more students in extended day learning or after, I used to call them after-school programs, but now I'm told they're called extended day learning programs. Always changing things. We have three great partnerships, right? So we have the REACH program, YMCA and CNU Center. So over 300 students can be in a safe place until six o'clock. And I think that really has helped attendance, believe it or not, and, and some other things. Because the parents don't have to, you know, keep their kid, you know, they have to leave work, they can leave their kid at school all, all day until six, six o'clock in a, in a safe place. So I think that's really helped us in this area. So phone calls, you can read all of that. I'm not going to get into that. So, so next slide, I think I wanted to show and highlight that I did a little, ran a report in Power School just for January. So last year in January versus this year in January. So last year in January, the whole school, 86% attendance. This January just completed 96% attendance. So, you know, I'm knocking on wherever the wood is, so that this continues. And then chronic absences, which is what the target in this area, nine or more last school year, August through January, 86 students to this year from the beginning of the year till the end of January, 22 students. So this, we're moving in the right direction. In terms of what we're considering changing, because we know this, there are families for a variety of different reasons that still struggle, even though we see COVID numbers decrease in the community coming to school daily, which they need to, doing home visits. So that's one of the things we're looking at. And attendance awards, so something, something positive. So I think that's my section. I probably talked a little bit too long, but thank you. And here's Patty to talk about English language learner progress.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Patricia Alcoser and I'm the assistant principal of Adelante Selby. So goal two is centered around our English learners or, or ELs making yearly progress with the goal of reclassifying within, to English proficient, proficient within five years. We did not make our overall goal, however, we did have 120 students that made one or more years growth in, in, on the LPAC. There are many opportunities for us to grow in this goal and in this area. We just had a reclassification ceremony on last Monday where we had 25 students reclassify. And talking to Lazi Danelli, we have a couple more that are coming down the pike. So that's exciting for us. And our reclassification for the ELs within five years, spring of 2022, we did have 23 students, which was 10%. Our target for spring 2023 is going to be 35 students, which is 15%. And talking with Warren about this, we actually saw that by the time we administer the LPAC and the standard, or the S-Back, the state test the students take, they're not able to actually reclassify as Adelante Selby students because they carries on to the next year. So we were looking at the program. So we're like, how many of these are ours? And we found about 14 students that reclassified as sixth graders. Yeah, after leaving our school. Go to the next slide. Thank you, Liz. Which is within, yes, the five years. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just saying if, you know, if they come to us in first grade, I mean kindergarten, well, I guess it is the, well, no, it's the first grade, but still, yeah, it can take five years for a lot of the kids. So anyway, that's great news. Yeah, thank you.
And going to our tiered system here. In tier one, our immersion program is a 90-10 model, so 90% in the targeted language, 10% in, in English. To meet the needs of all the students, we do have designated ELD time. TK through third grade, participate, they teach the, the SEAL units, the somatic units. And the third through fifth grade also work with the NUA to scaffold support in thinking maps and student voice. For tier two, we do have pull out small groups that support reading intervention in the lower grades in Spanish to help with that targeted language. We also, they also help with the newcomers and our level one students. We do have a great relationship with Friends With Youth, El Centro de Libertad, to help with the transition of these newcomers from their native land to the United States and help with any trauma that they may be endured on the journey. Also in tier three, which is the one-on-one counseling, the, the Carisolus community, the community-based referral, that also is to help address any trauma or anything those parents need in the transition to the United States. You can go to the next. Oh. You can go to the next. Yeah, thank you. So again, the strategies that are working is having that designated ELD time, the explicit instruction to help with the, with the LPAC testing. We know this because we had 25 students reclassify with a couple more, according to Leslie, that we're hoping reclassify. What we, the strategies that aren't working right now is that we're, we, we get a lot of students that are newcomers in the upper grades. And sometimes they don't come with all the literacy skills at, at that level to be able to transfer from their native language in, into English. And looking at absenteeism, if they're not here consistently, then they're not making the growth in, in English. So what we're considering changing is since we have welcomed 20 newcomer students to our school since August, with another newcomer starting in, on Tuesday, actually. We are looking for a newcomer instructional assistant. We did have one at the beginning of the year, but there was a need at another school. So that was, she was pulled from our school. So we think this is just important in order to help those students move towards reclassification within those, within the five, yearly growth, but then reclassifying within, within the five. So I'll pass it back to Warren.
Good job. How are we doing on our time?
You took it all.
The clock's not going to go.
You took it all in the first call.
I took it all in the first call. All right, great job, Patty. So goal. I did, yeah, don't, don't, don't. Okay, so goal three is progress in reading and in math. So we're looking at I-Red. Go back one so I can remember what I'm saying. We, we look at I-ready as, and it's our formative assessment. So we take it three times a year for in, to measure our reading growth and our math growth. And then third through fifth graders take the, the CASP test at the end of the year. So I would, go ahead, you can go to the next slide. We have lots of opportunities to improve with our state test scores. We were able to meet a number of our formative goals last year in second through fourth grade in terms of percentages that we had set, the school site council, moving more students into what I call the green at or above grade level in reading and decreasing the number that were two grade levels below in the red. We did not meet that goal in math, however, with the formative assessment, and that is a major concern that we have this year and, and going into next year. We were able to meet the goals, moving the students out of far below basic in the I-ready, but not meeting the, the goal, the percents moving into the green at or above grade levels on the formative assessments. So in, in setting targets with the school sites council and developing the site plan, we're on I-ready, we feel a little more confident, a little bit more aggressive with our targets. So you can see they're a little bit higher. When we move to CASP, if you move, I think it's the next slide or one after this next one. We looked at 5% improvement. So it's a little bit more conservative because we, we feel like we're, we're showing more growth on the I-ready formative assessment than the state test. So that's how we established our targets. And you can see there's a lot of, I keep saying it, opportunities for growth in, in math in particular. Go to the next slide, please. So Patty talked a little bit around our dual immersion model. And district-wide, a number of years ago, the platinum ticket was basically how we divide the school day in, and how we're teaching reading, math, social studies, science and ELD. So we're still following that. I know in our meetings with Liz, principals are looking at a new kind of way, agreements among all the schools. So we're all teaching the same way. So I know this might be changing, but this is what we're using. This is our plan currently. And then Patty touched on this, we in TK through third grade, we teach integrated units. We were a demonstration site earlier, previous years. And there's a heavy focus on teaching academic vocabulary, language in a thematic way. So they do five to six-week units. They switch between social studies and science themes. And it works well. And then we've had a great partnership and I think a number of schools in the district have really benefited from National Urban Alliance. So in the last two years, we've had them working, and this year started with third grade. Started last year with fourth and fifth grade and added third grade. And they've been great with their different strategies, learning strategies. We call them high operational practices, the hops, to try to instill the hips, the high intellectual performance. That's, that's what, that's how I remember it and that's how they say it. So we had Robert Price just at the school site on, on Tuesday and he was wonderful. He was showing different strategies, different maps, and then they had their different, doing different language functions. They were opinion and fact, and that might sound somewhat hard for some people to distinguish, but he had the students thinking them out. And then he, he's like, huddle up, let me see a couple of your journals. And then he grabbed a journal and then they just tried to think out loud how to do the writing, how to take the information from the map to writing. So I think it just lets all the students that are at different levels access the content and organize their thinking. So I think it's really good. I'm probably talking too much now, I'll stop on that. And then we're using I-ready in the last couple of years. This is something Liz Wolf brought in as our assistant superintendent. And I-ready really helps us to differentiate. So they, when they take the assessment, it'll put them at a level and then they take 60 to 100 minutes, right, at their level, moving forward. And at the same time, the teachers can assign lessons that are at the grade level, that they're, that they're teaching the grade level standards. So they're, they can assign those lessons as well. So that's all tier one. There's a lot of other stuff there, obviously, that we could not include. I do want to call your attention on this slide to, to tier two. We have a very, I would say, robust inter, reading intervention program. A lot of our site budget and plan is really based around providing extra support for students in reading intervention. And first through fifth grades, we have 121 students benefiting from that. And speaking with intervention teachers today, I just want to get a, a gauge, 90 of the 121 have made significant progress, progress since the beginning of the year. So it's really important to keep them motivated and also accelerate their growth is the goal. And looking at the math data this year, we also did some creative thinking. And looking at the math data this year, we also did some creative thinking with some of the staffing to provide some math intervention support as well. So that's a new thing this year. So fifty-five students right now are in third through fifth grade because they're going to take the state test at the end of the year, are getting some additional support. And we also, I'm very proud to say, leveraging some of the partnerships with Menlo School. And parent volunteers have after-school math tutoring going on for for some of our reach students in third through fifth grade that we've seen good results. And then tier three, just needier students typically go through student study team meetings. Five oh fours, if they have a medical concern could lead into an IEP because they have a learned, demonstrated learning disability, and then they have goals set to their IEP with RSP pullout or mainstream and support in the classroom. So we have seen, although we didn't meet our goals in this area. We had seen some good progress this school year in I ready reading. There was, there's been a thirteen percent improvement since the beginning of the year in students at or above grade level and a ten percent improvement, which is more difficult, I feel to move students from two grade levels below up out of that level. And then in mass similar trend, nine percent improvement of students improving at at the green, I call it at or above grade level. And a thirteen percent improvement, which is is more significant, I would say, moving students out of the the far below two grade levels or below in math. So again, I said it, I think, three times during the section, math continues to be a challenge. I think that next year we'll have a new adoption, right, Liz? And we have, we're lucky to have two teachers that are serving on the textbook, textbook adoption committee. And I'm hopeful that they will be the leaders next year and we'll all kind of be on the same page. And a lot more focus on on math in general to see see what we can do. Conclusion. It's not the conclusion. Now we get some more of the, the more fun stuff. So I love this stuff. If anyone knows me, I like to build community. I think it's great to provide memorable experiences for the students that they'll never forget. And also bring parents back to school. So remember last year, they couldn't even set foot on the campus. So this year, we've already had some, a couple of successful events. And just a few of them here, you can see in in some of the pictures. Just, it's, it's a great school community. And my, that's, that's not me on the slide, huh? That's me on the video. Okay. So one of the new, the the wonderful events last spring, and we're planning again, is the science fair, where all third through fifth graders do a presentation, and we have some great parent volunteers that got a grant. And we actually, they were talking last night at the UNIDAS meeting about possibly expanding it to other schools. Which is exciting because they have an equity lens. And then everyone is invited to our Dia del Nino event at the end of the year. It's, it's a, it's a great event to teach cultural condition, could about culture, but also just a, a school community and a district and a city community event. So, yeah. And they can remember dunking Director Warren in the dunk tank. I'll never forget that. So I'm gonna introduce Jose Luna. He'll talk a little bit about student voice.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jose Luna. I'm the community school coordinator at Adelante Selby, and I think we went one slide too far. Let me be a parent outreach the first one, or maybe, I might be.
Maybe it's the last one.
Maybe. Oh, we can do nineteen first if you want. So student voice, so at our school, we really, one of our focus is building and making sure our school does feel like a true community. This is the second year that Adelante Selby is a full-time community school. A community school, and that's where I came in. This is my second year in this role. So one of my main focus is student voice. Some way we go about this, it's like Warren mentioned, student council and through student council, we do the peer mediators through there. Also, students are able to vote for their once-a-month spirit days. So if you see these pictures, there's all these activities we do during the day or drew it throughout the year. We have our spirit day. One of our students did a whole paint thing on her head. Last year, we did a kindness week for every day of the week. We'd had different challenges. We built different packets for the teachers to decide what they wanted to do in the classroom. And then during lunch, we did the adelante, let's each other up with mural outside their wine's office, and every student was able to do a balloon of kindness words to each other. I picked one on the corner that says, even in a bad day, be happy that you're alive because you're a beauty. So I kept a few of those and put around our family center. We have down below, we have direct, every Thursday, we do the Alebriche, they pull tickets and then students win their responsible friend who are carrying bracelets. Just to name a few of the activities we have where we empower the students' voices. And I'm going to read you one of the quotes for one of our fifth graders that said, Adelante Selby has awesome and helpful people. Everyone here helps each other out without giving it a second thought. And we can go on to the next slide. So parent outreach, we love to have our parents on campus. So we do that through, there's way, there's a lot of different ways we invite our parents to be leaders of our school, to take part in the decision-making and even just events. Just to name a few, we have the traditional three PTO, SSC and ELAC, all that meet once a month. We do from field trips, take-home reading programs, math tutoring, we invite our parents to be active participants in every day of the of our school day. And our PTO this year funded what we call the Parent PTO Fingerprint Fund. So they set set aside money to help offset our families pay for their fingerprints so they can be clear volunteers. So right now, we're about two hundred parents that are cleared to be on campus, field trips in classroom. So we have a huge number of parents that we have that we can tap into to be there every day. So we also have constant communication, our, our principal's newsletter that goes out every other week, that's alternate with the PTO newsletter. Facebook page, we're constantly posting on there. We have things to blackboard, we have our text, emails and phone calls that go out to all of our families. So they're very aware of what's going on campus every single day. Sorry. So we have a lot of partnerships at our campus. So one, like through One Life and Familias Unidos, we're able to contact our families and invite them to participate in all of these parent, either support groups or parent leadership groups. And and the family center where we, where I'm at, we do constant personal calls and emails to our families when we find something that they could be a perfect match for. We have, we know our families. That's one thing that I'm really proud of that I I love knowing all my students and knowing what could benefit them. And I'm have a liberty to see them every day and know, hey, this program's coming up. Let's come up with a list of twenty kids, thirty kids, and I tap into them, the front office, the teachers, and we make sure that those calls go out. So we create those personal relationships with their families. And we can go to the next slide. And this is where you see the bulk of the family center work. So like Warren said, our extended learning and outreach opportunities and enrichment. We have about fourteen programs on campus every single day. They alternate between Reach YMCA and Sienna, which are the extended learning opportunities, but we also have enrichment like Peninsula Bridge, Friends for Youth, our Girl Start, which is a STEAM program director for girls. We have our girl choir, I sing, we have garden dance, just to name some of the few things that are happening in our campus. Just today, YMCA had martial arts going on, and next door, we had the STEM club. So it was like a the backlot was full of different activities, and I had math tutoring going on in one room. So it's nice to see that the kids had a lot of options to to do throughout after-school. Migrant education, we do have a few students that are part of the migrant education, and they get services throughout the year and during the summer. And then our family net services, our biggest one being Second Harvest, we help about five hundred families every single month. And from what I hear from Second Harvest, we're the biggest distribution site in Redwood City School District. And tomorrow, we'll be out there. Twice a month, yeah, second and fourth Thursday of every month. Housing and medical referrals, we throw them out to the Ferrox Community Center or whatever other resources we have, but Ferrox is usually our number one to go to. We also have a partnership with Operation School Bill that provides uniforms and backpacks for our students. So far this year, we had about a hundred and fifteen students receive full clothing for school, pants, polos, sweatshirts, sweatpants and backpacks, school supplies. Atherton PD is one of our huge partners for the holidays. And this year, we're able to have a hundred and forty-four of our kids come by and receive Christmas presents for the year. We're up forty from last year, so it was a hundred and four last year, a hundred and forty-four this year. So we're hoping that every year we can grow. Through our partnership with Redwood City Together, last year, we piloted the Way to Go Clipper Card Program. So seventy-five of our students received Clipper Cards for fifteen months. They were able to go on any public transportation. That led into creating, which was the youth unlimited bus passes that are now expanded to whole other schools. Right now, we have a hundred and four of our students completely free bus passes for twelve months. And out of those, eighty-nine of those go to Sienna Center in the bus, so they get to go for complete for free. That is just some of our, our day-to-day at Adelante Selby's Community School. Thank you. I'm gonna hand it back to Warren.
Including comments. So I think one of the things that's missing that we lost, I think about three years ago, was having an onsite instructional coach. I think when we were working on implementing stronger guided reading strategies and and learning about guided reading and how to move kids forward. Having somebody on campus that could work with our, our teachers and model best practices. And also help with our SEAL implementation was very, very powerful. So that's something that's missing, even a point five person, I think, in the areas of math, ELD and reading would be the areas that I would I think all the schools would benefit for. We need an ELD curriculum, the district-wide, Ms. Daniele is aware of that, that we we need it. I think any curriculum, though, should be aligned to what their, the teachers are are teaching in their their units. So there's some schema, there's some background knowledge, it's not just separated. So I think that's important district-wide, not just for our school. Patty talked about you know, we have newcomers coming all the time. We love newcomers, but they do need additional support. Particularly for ELD, particularly at a dual immersion, in a dual immersion program. So that's one area that we we want more support. Math, I talked about, I think, just in general, we need more training in PD around math next year, probably district-wide, not just at our school. TK, which I heard a lot of interest in tonight, and I've been getting a lot at at my school as well. They have a twelve to one ratio. I don't know if the board is aware of that, or parents are aware of that. Parents like that. Which means they have to have two adult, it's twenty-four to one class size. So when the instructional assistant, the good news is they get an instructional assistant all day long, when they're absent or the teacher's, we have to get subs in there. It's been very much of a struggle this year. We're all, so I know. I'm coming to the, I'm coming to the Wizard of Oz here, asking for everything, but but that's something I I think that needs to be kept in mind with TK. I do think it's great. It prepares them to be the leaders in the in the kinder, the following year, whatever school they're at. STEAM, we didn't get a chance to talk about STEAM. That has been one of the best new things we have at Adelante Selby this year. All this other stuff that's going on, STEAM has been wonderful. We use our Measure U funds to fund a point five position. We would love to have a full-time position. It's just, and I would encourage you to come visit the the program. Come on campus and see David Hopper in action. So that's something. And students and parents and principal would humbly like our swings return. They were taken down from one day to the next without any notice in November. So you know, that kind of goes to goal one, right? We want kids moving around, doing things fun at recess time. Apparently, there's something with the hinges, according to Martine, but I'm humbling asking. And we want our tetherball courts back that were removed three years ago. So when they put in the solar panels, which are great, we love the solar panels. Just, we want kids to have more things to do at, at, when they're outside during unstructured times. So I don't think it's that expensive, so. And I think that's my report. Our, our report. We have questions?
Yes, stay up there, and your, and your staff stay there. So it's, it's open to.
But first off, thank you. It was a great presentation. I, I'm just gonna go right down and not any particular or some of my reaction. So first off, I love the student peer supports. I think that's really fantastic. Engaging students actively in the construction of their school is empowering and effective. It's so great to see you putting that to play. Amazing numbers on suspensions and the the progress on absenteeism that takes real work, and boy, those numbers really show it. So fantastic job there. Wonderful to see home visits as something that you're looking at for an intervention that that's a proven intervention. So it makes me really happy to see data-driven interventions at play here. I'm gonna be a little bit of a broken record on this. This is not particular to, this is particular to every school in the district. But the EL reclassification data doesn't answer the question about whether or not every student that is an English learner is advancing one year per calendar year. I'm, I'm just seeing the the distributions. I need to see the data presented in a way that lets me know whether or not we're actually hitting our targets.
Yeah, we, we, I think Patty said it, and I think I responded in an email to John to to relay information. We did not meet that goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did not meet that goal that every student. I think we had a hundred and twenty that that met the goal or or increased that there were a hundred and twenty there, but that meant there was about a hundred and sixty or so that stayed the same, that didn't meet the goal.
Yeah. So, yeah. Thank you for sharing that. Ideally, in presentations like this, where we're trying to answer the question, the answer is provided in such a form factor that it does answer the question. So it's, it's great that the data is there. And similarly, for the I ready data, the the linked deck does answer, like, the distribution of how are students advancing? I'd love to see like that be a center point of our presentations in terms of how are students advancing? And this is because students come to different schools at different levels, right? So some students may come to a school three grade levels behind, and if the school can in one calendar year advance that student to only be one calendar, only one grade level behind. So if they go up two levels in one year, that's huge. That's amazing. So we should be celebrating something like that. And conversely, for schools.
The hard work.
Right, that's, that's incredibly hard work. Yes, very challenging. And then conversely, schools that have very high-performing students that are ingested need to continue making progress on that. Can't just camp with their laurels. So anyhow, thank, thank you for your progress on that. On math, I I think like some real clear work is needed here, and so whatever the district can do to support you, because having, was it ten percent of students at or above grade level? It's just not okay. And having only about a third of the students advancing one, one level in in the year is like, is really not good. So we we need to figure out a strategy as a district for teaching math that is different than what we're doing now, because the current approach doesn't seem to be working. I'm not saying I have an answer, but like this seems pretty broken, and our students deserve better than that. On the fingerprint fund, that's totally awesome, and that makes me think, is there something that we should be doing as as a district? Because it is in the district's interest for parents to be able to volunteer and participate on campus. So I mean, that's amazing that your PTO did that, but it's also a little sad that your PTO had to do it. It'd be really nice if the district could find ways to have a fingerprinting fund that we set aside a little something, maybe have mass enrollment fingerprinting days for people who want to volunteer for the district. Things to make it very easy to lower the barrier for participating, because I want to have more of our schools doing stuff like that.
I'm really proud, actually, of the, I'm glad you brought that up. The the UNIDAS parent group has had this equity lens. They're very strong on, I remember during distance learning, trying to create pods for underserved families that didn't have any, anybody watching kids at home, and to this year, wanting to get more, you know, pay if people want to volunteer, pay the eighty-five dollar fee for fingerprinting it, right, started right at May's Day, the week before school started, we were we were doing that at May's Day. So I really appreciative of that equity lens for for those parents.
Awesome.
Our parents.
Also, let's bring back the swings and the tetherball. Like, let's find a way to make that happen. Okay, that was a lot of comments from me. Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Thanks.
You guys want to go on?
Mike?
Forget Mike.
Yeah, why can't I let Mike go?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks. Thank you, Warren, Patty, Jose, for coming down and presenting. Sorry I'm not there in person. It's good, good to hear about what's going on at Adelante Selby. Enjoyed the pictures at the end. I like the Music Man pictures slideshow that you had included in there, so you can get to touch on it. So thanks for that. I liked, thank you for deep diving a little bit on what the mental health. I liked, uh thank you for deep diving a little bit on what the mental health counselors were doing in your goal one and how that was really supporting in the different cases that are in there, I think that's, you know, important for us to keep reflecting on, because you know, that was coming out of COVID dollars, and I think that's something that we have to figure out how to continue uh going forward, so the more we hear about that, uh the better, I also liked hearing about the the uh whatever the extended learning opportunities are today with partners with Reach, YMCA, uh et cetera, and how you see that as an affecting uh attendance, that's something that um I think is a great opportunity for us. Um I had two questions, I I'm not gonna add on more with what uh with what David already brought up. Um but I, just two questions that maybe you can um touch on just a little bit in the um goal two. One one is that the need for an ELD curriculum, because I think we heard that before at other schools, and I think we have ones. I think it's really a question of maybe a new one or a revamped one, but could you?
Yeah.
You are, or maybe um uh Liz.
So I can, like, or lit, I could defer to Liz if you. So um Benchmark, um and in Spanish, it's called ironically Adelante, of course. Is our um our textbook, right, for for teaching language arts, and there is a a portion of um that that has some ELD um lessons and support, but it's not a, it's not a standalone um curriculum, so I think uh what I've seen over the years, teachers are super busy, they do a lot of planning and intentionality around teaching of reading and believe it or not, math and and other things that they're doing. I think ELD is is an area that it would be nice to have something um that they don't have to do a lot of planning and that would, but I really want it to to go with our with our theme, so it makes sense, so there's some some schema there. I don't know if I'm talking too much educate, educationese, if that's a word. But I I feel like it is a real need, I also appreciate uh Leslie Daniele, she came out and did some staff development with with our with our faculty this year around um best practices for ELD. And also um reminding teachers uh in lesson plans to try to incorporate some of the LPAC uh question stems, uh which we weren't all uh doing, uh so I think that'll help, but um I don't know if that answers the question, and if Liz, if you want to chime in.
So the question about ELD curriculum has come up before and has been a concern for um sometime this year. And so Leslie has taken a couple of people with her to county office showings of curriculum, has looked at stuff online, has had um different you know, samples sent, and nothing has been a really good match um to what we need right now, and it's super old. And so we're looking to see, um there is some free curriculum out there, um so we're taking a look at that. And as um Warren said, we're trying to find some materials that aren't a standalone, completely isolated from everything else that we're doing, and so it's kind of a hard thing that we're looking for, which is something new, um aligned with our integrated units and our themes, yet a a good viable curriculum. So we are looking and we haven't found anything yet, but we're still looking.
Got it, and then when talking about the iReady goals, you dove into a little bit about how the NUA strategies are helping in the upper grades. But it's also mentioned that it helps for ELs, is that for or for goal number two and reclassification? Is there something, I mean, is it just because of the same reasons, or is there something else unique about it that's worth sharing with us about how um how that scaffolding kind of helps for um helping to reach towards the reclassification target?
Yeah, I think um, I don't know if I said it well earlier, um and I, again, I would invite you like I said, to come out and see the STEAM lab come out on a demonstration day, you can uh, it's great to see Robert, or we had Stephanie prior to to demonstrate what they do, I think it gives access to all students, it's the kind of the great equalizer, right? Because students are at all different levels in the classroom, uh English learners, um uh students with IEPs, with learning um disabilities, students that are far below grade level that aren't English learners, right? That are English-only students that are far below grade level. It gives them access uh to the to the content, and it scaffolds it in a way that supports their their thinking, organizing the information, kind of gives them the tools to instill the high, a high, what did I say it was? The hips, right, the high intellectual performance, right? So they're using high operational practices to instill the high intellectual performance. So and it might sound a little trite, but it's really true, um and it's better to come see it in person than listen to me talk about it. Sounds great. March sixth, you're invited to, you're invited, you're invited, Mike, to come on March sixth.
Excellent, excellent, thanks. Um, all right, thank, thanks for presenting again.
It's nice to do it in person instead of from at home, on a computer.
All right, well, it's so nice to have the three of you here, thank you so much for your presentation, I really enjoyed it. I love that we're getting back to school reports, and as you said, back in person, um so thank you very much, really appreciate it. And I also want to give a shout out uh to all the teachers and the staff at Adelante Selby, so I know um some of them are online and some of them are prepping for the kids tomorrow, so I really appreciate all the hard work that you do. Um and then also, of course, thank you to the families and the students. So um just a few things, um I won't repeat, you know, some of the things that David and um oh my gosh, uh Mike, sorry. Let's say I had a senior moment, but I don't think I'm quite there, but I had a moment, um, good thing your name's right there, Mike. No, I'm joking, I know Mike very well, okay, so what I wanted to say um that I really appreciate, you know, seeing the data, and I'm always reflecting that before COVID, we were making a lot of progress in literacy, reading and math. And COVID has set us back, there's no question, it's set us back, it's set up the state, the nation, the world back, and I really want to say I appreciate the focus that you've had this year in particular. Well, last year and this year, as we come back, is really caring, you know, that that one caring adult, that um relationship building, that belonging and all of that, because we have a lot to make up for, right? And we know that we have a lot of, as you said, opportunity um to improve, you know, in our literacy and our math in particular. Um but I I think it's um, you know, it's important that in order to do that, there also has to be all these other things, right, to go along with it. So thank you for your recognition that we have work to do, I really appreciate your concluding comments and just some of those that you went through in terms of what more you need from the district and the board, and this is a theme, it's not just your school site, it's other school sites. So it's helpful for us to think about as we think about how we bring in more resources or how we move resources around what we can do. Because as you know, we have limited resources, but when we know it's important, then we can think about how we might shift some of those. So so thank you very much for identifying those. I uh did want to say, you know, just how important uh, you know, some of your interventions and your extra tutoring and all your after-school, your extended day learning um is so important just to to really help the students. I really appreciate the student voice, um I know that's something that I've heard from students all the time, I heard it from my own kids. Um how they want to be engaged in their learning, right, they want to feel like they're a part of it, they want ownership, and the more ownership and voice they have, the 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 better they're gonna do. So great job on focusing on that, and then of course, just all the family engagement. As you said, it's been wonderful to have our parents and families back on campus. I know I've been going to some of the different events uh that school sites have been holding, and it's just so great. And and it's, we're having like the biggest attendance, right, we've ever had, because people are just excited to be back together, so. Um and I know that takes a lot of work from staff and parents to put on, so thank you.
We we appreciate you coming out to the the Cafe Cito, that parents really enjoyed having you.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to coming out again, so we'll make that happen. Um, and I did want to give a shout out to Adelante Selby, I mean, not only, I was thinking back to the SEAL and how, you know, um one of the demonstration sites and, you know, things like that, that all along that you've been doing. But um on the pilot on the bus passes, you know, Adelante Selby was the pilot for, I think there were just one of a couple pilots for all of San Mateo County, and then we proved how successful that was and with the data that you delivered. And then now all of San Mateo County for our students who receive free and reduced lunch, they're getting free bus passes, and that's huge. I mean, that's about getting kids to school. So once again, I'm always proud that our school district uh responds to these pilots and trials, we're willing to give it a shot, we're willing to do the extra work. And that's a lot of extra work for staff to, you know, we had to get the data together and all of that, so anyway, I just wanted to give you a shout out.
And through Sienna Youth Center also helped.
Yes, they did, yes, they did.
These are the neediest families, so it's really making a difference.
And in fact, it was Redwood City who was talking to Sam Trans and others in the county who were making all the noise that we need to make this happen, so again, we're actually helping kids throughout the county, not just our own kids. So I just, I think it's important to remember that. Um, and I think, I think, I think that's probably it, I have lots of other things that I could say, but I really appreciate you being here.
Come visit.
I will, I'll come out again, and I did want to say I do love the STEAM, I have been out there and I I need to get out there again, so, good. All of my comments have already been said. Um, so I'll be quick, but thank you for being here, um and to everybody who's here, um appreciate you coming out, um and thank you for the report. Um, definitely want to highlight those suspensions and the the attendance, I think you're doing a wonderful job there, um so thank you for your work on that. Um, I absolutely love seeing zero suspensions, I think that's fantastic. Um, great increase in attendance as well, and yes, we, you know, we were telling people stay home, we know that. Um, because that's what we were being told to tell people, and people are listening, which is great. Um, and now we need to get people back in school, so. Um, let's see. A hundred and seventy-six students in reading and math intervention, I think is fantastic, so thank you for your work on that. Um, I love seeing all the activities and events, I know that you love having them, but I love seeing that you brought them back. Bringing your community together, lifting people up, um I think that's what everybody needs right now, so thank you for doing that. And I was really happy to see the picture of your garden still being used, you have an amazing garden, um and so I'm happy to see that that's still in use. Um, we need to get swings back, make sure they're safe, um it sounds like it's a safety concern, so.
Something with the hinges is what, it shouldn't take four months, four months to get hinges, yeah.
Um, but yes, I agree that the students need those um activities uh at break time. And I do need to come out and visit, I don't think I've seen the STEAM yet, so um I will make an appointment with you to come on out. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, just like, I'm like, oh, I'm coming, I see your moment. I know, right, um obviously, everybody, thank you for the presentation, all three of you, and again, all teachers and staff that work there. Obviously, without your help, our students will not be learning, and so um one of the things is I even on a personal level, and being an English learner at one point, the way I see education is, we are making, you guys are making the best possible to make the students learn, so even when they move one step, again, especially with the English learners, they're actually making a really big progress, they're actually working double from comparing to their peers, so that just to me says a lot. Um, I do um like that you talked about the Alebri hit tickets, because I think the positive reinforcement, instead of again, telling them, no, I think that's good. You probably motivate more kids to actually do better, and so they see what the other kids are doing, and so that brings the community, that makes them learn, and again, that makes parents want to go to the school, because again, it's a awesome community, um not to be biased, but all three kids of mine graduated from Adelante, when I was just Adelante, so actually, Adelante Selby, my last one. And so um, you know, it's it's a great um school, it's a great program, um and I always appreciated the fact that kids come out of there and even those that are a little behind, eventually at the end of the day, will thrive in their professional or adult life, um. Let's see, um the only, I guess, question, and I know it's probably silly to ask, but the math portion, I know during COVID, when we were still in Zoom, we had talked about the testing being whether offered in Spanish or English. And is this, we're talking about the iReady testing, and then at one point, is that again, offered to the Spanish or the In- whether the English learners or the students at Adelante that are actually able to take the test in Spanish? Because again, if we're teaching math in Spanish, but gi- but giving the test in English, it might just be a little bit more.
They they can take the formative test, the iReady, but the state test at the end of the year is in English.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And for the third, third through eighth grade, right, they have to take it in English.
Okay, great. Um, and then math tutoring, again, that that's great, um and then I just want to point out, obviously, to Jose, I really appreciate your enthusiasm, and then you telling us how obviously you get to know all your students, and therefore you pair them up with whatever resources you guys can find, and obviously, it's a teamwork, so I do really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
So Warren, I want to thank you for everything you have done, especially prior to COVID. As you know, we had the reimagining Redwood City, and it wasn't an easy task to bring your site along, the Selby site, along with Adelante. And I remember the meetings that we sat through with the parent groups coming together, intense. Very communicative. Each school had their differences, but we were bringing them together, and not only the parents, but the staffs. There are many meetings, um Patty, I know you're there also, I'll say you weren't there at that time, but I will definitely um always walk away from those meetings thinking what a positive influence you had on making this work. To today, it was going well, and as you pointed out, March thirteenth, in Milan, and it kind of moved things a little in different directions. But to see what you're doing right now from that time period is very positive, and you should be proud of yourself, your staff, your community of where you are. Yes, there are a lot of opportunities, but we're all struggling with these opportunities. I was at Stanford along with Liz a week from, a week ago Monday, right, I think it was, Amado Patia, he is Dr. Patia, who did that study. Uh during one of the breaks, he says, well, how are things going, da-da-da, because you're back from the COVID and so forth. He goes like, you know, he did the research, he and his staff did the research on Adelante, and um constantly is out in the community and other areas of California and other states touting the program. And if you're going to do a Spanish dual immersion program, this is the matter and how you have to go. We, I did tell him about, you know, our our setbacks, because that's normal, what are you talking about? And he says, just watch, those kids will do as they, as the previous group did by the time they get to high school. And as that report showed, if they started with us, and at that time, there was no TK, it was kindergarten. And by the time they left high school, bilingual, bilingual, grade-wise, A through G courses into major universities, private universities in this state and in other states. So it can be done, so I I wouldn't beat myself up.
That's the goal.
I'm 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 really proud of everything that you have done, I'm proud that Patty came on board. I'm I'm glad that you have been a great mentor and built, really happy that, but that you stepped up and you wanted to take the position.
Jose, great job.
I know it was halftime for beginning, but then, you know, Michelle kind of worked her magic, and we got the, got you full time.
I helped too.
Yeah, by twisting my arm. Uh, very pleased to see where the community school is at this point in time, I know Michelle is out there working on another grant. Um, and remember, the community schools are only, the funding that we get is for our students who are on free and reduced lunch, it doesn't go in other directions, so. And the funding that she's looking at right now is additional funding, and if it comes through, it's a great chunk of change for the district, for the community schools in the district, although, but I'm really a bit disappointed in, it doesn't allow us to create new ones. Yeah, it's it's interesting, I I was really disappointed to hear that.
It just funds existing.
Exactly, right, and sure, probably created more, um but again, it's accord, it's according to those students who are on free and reduced lunch, that's that's the amount always you get. So it's come a long way, Jose, it's come a very long way, and thank you so much for the harvest food giveaway that you do twice a month, I've been through that at one time to come see you, and my gosh, the amount of food that's given. And my gosh, the amount of food that's given and, and.
Yeah, we have, we're also, I didn't shout them out, but our yard, we have five yard duties that, uh, they're out there helping with the food distribution.
And during COVID, they were doing.
They're amazing. Yeah.
Rainer's time.
Unsung, unsung heroes in the district. Yeah.
Correct. So thank you so much for everything.
Thank you for, thank you for your leadership and support. Yeah. I thank you to the school board. Come out and visit. Yeah.
Thank you very much again. Um, so moving on with, um, and again, just to remember, remind everybody, item nine point two was, um, pulled. So moving on to nine point three, first reading and discussion of board policy five, one, one, three, absences and excuses.
Thank you. Tonight we are bringing the, a couple of board policies that, I know originate from CSBA. And the board policy, your microphone? Yes.
It's just not ready. Or maybe it's because it's not working.
Exactly. Okay.
Oh, yeah. All right, round two. Hello.
Better.
Yes. So tonight we have a couple of board policies to review. And this particular one is on absences and excuses um, in regards to attendance. And so you can note in the board memo, the differences and changes primarily around ed code. And as you know, we follow ed code. That's part of one of the laws that we, uh, review in our board policy committee. And CSBA embeds within the language. So I appreciate comments and questions prior. I responded to everyone. I had one little later one this evening, but, um, hopefully all of those have been answered. But I would like to open it up for discussion in case there are any questions or comments for the group with the intent that if things are, um, discussed tonight, that we can bring it back on March eighth uh, for a second reading. And please note, the resolution is just for an example. So you could see it. It's not for intended to be tonight necessarily.
I was just amused at the notion of a four hour religious retreat, but, um, apparently that was actually copy paste from code. So thank you for addressing that.
Of course.
Hey, just, just so I understand, so the resolute, when we adopt, if, if we adopt the policy in the future, at the same time, would we have to adopt the resolution? Is that, is that how it works process wise?
Yes, for the second reading on March eighth, all any edits, adjustments, information that needs to be included, including the proper format of the resolution will be brought to the board on March eighth.
I didn't have anything to comment on about the, um, policy.
Thank you. And then you answer my question. So I appreciate it. Okay. Well, obviously and Janet and Alyssa are on the committee. So, and obviously there's a discussion. So moving on to nine point four, first reading and discussion of our policy six, one, one, four, six, one, six, four point two, guidance and counseling services. Thank you. This policy was exciting to bring as an update because there's been so many changes in the last few years regarding counseling service and the multi-tiered system of support, language and information embedded in, uh, this particular policy and the benefits for students primarily. So I know that all of you had thoughts and comments about this, and I, I do know Mr. Weekly, you have a, uh, thought about this. That would be great to discuss tonight regarding the budget piece. Uh, but really what is wonderful about this policy is it outlines, especially in an elementary school setting, what counseling supports look like. And of course, with our counselors who are our employees, in this particular case, our mental health counselors. We have partners, as you heard tonight, with One Life and Star Vista in the past, and they're separate organizations that do their own evaluations and data analysis, but of course provide data for the district. And so in our own in-house system, that would, our employees would be evaluated like any other employee would be, and then the data noted accordingly. And so that language is written in here, but is really will be flushed out in the administrative regulations, step by step, for what staff will be doing to ensure those things occur. Um, this particular board policy has the strikeouts for the AR. So those need to be redeveloped. This is somewhat unusual to see. But in this particular case, there are not, uh, provided updates from CSBA yet. So we will use those as a guide, but they're not available yet. Um, I know the board is focused on the board policy, but I wanted to draw that to your attention.
Though FYI, just my note was the strikeout of budget permitting. And if that is no longer a caveat or a constraint, that implies a mandate uh, to fund it, kind of regardless of what else is going on financially with the district, or at least it to a pedestrian, uh, it, it, such as myself, it, 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 it might appear as such. And so I would be a little bit concerned about, uh, removal of language that says budget permitting. Yeah. Those seem like dangerous words to strike from a policy because then they, they bind our hands for like how we're allowed. Right. And so that, that's not meant to critique the provisioning of guidance and, and counseling services. There's more just like making sure that we have full optionality available to us in the future to make the budget what the budget needs to be.
I think that's a good point. And I might, if we're going to take budget permitting out, change it to maybe available instead of show.
Or leave in budget permitting. I don't remember what, was that the recommendation from CSBA? Yeah, I don't remember. For the three of us discussing.
I don't either.
Particular ones. So.
And did you just, did you discuss it with council?
Sometimes we add stuff.
Did you discuss with council?
Um.
Was there any discussion with council regarding this?
Not regarding the budget piece.
Yeah. Look, I don't see, usually, usually it'll say like it's specific law, you know, right after that. But yeah, we could, we could double check. That is interesting. Yeah. Thank you for catching that. Um.
I, I do think that gives a lot more flexibility. And if the budget allows, wonderful. And if it doesn't, then it helps. That being said, with any other scenario, we would go through layoffs, but I do think it sounds conflicting. Yeah. A good catch on that. This is why we bring it for first reading too.
Thank you. I was worried that was mostly annoying.
Another set of eyes. That's important.
No, in fact, I was realize I'm not using my mic. Um, and in fact, you know, as you see more of the, well, maybe you've read all the policies. I doubt it. Yeah, I was just going to say maybe, maybe you had, because I know you did a lot of reading. Um, you'll see that a lot of ours do have a caveat, right? Because we have to have flexibility. Um, so, okay. So should we just, we can either change it to counseling staff may be available or just put back the budget permitting, which I'm fine with. I don't.
If we could keep budget permitting in there, that would make me happy.
But.
I, I'm actually wondering about, should we just making both changes?
Yeah, do make as well.
Staff may be available budget permitting.
Mm-hmm. I like that too. And then we can double check with legal that we're not missing something, but yeah.
Is Mike, Mike, are you good?
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense. I mean, as long as it's in accordance with what ed code and the law says, so.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to consent items. Can I please get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent items.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Weekly.
Hi.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Well.
Hi.
Vice President Lawson.
Hi.
President Marcus.
Hi. And then moving on to board and superintendent reports. Go ahead.
I, I feel bad because I went first on the commentary. So maybe we can listen. Okay. Um, I completed my first lap of the district. I have toured now and met with every single principal in the district and gone to their schools and, um, including one of the charters, uh, not, not all the charters. Um, and I wanted to share some of my, uh, preliminary findings, um, if that's all right. Um, so I'm just going to try and do a, a, the speed run of this. So I don't end up camping out too much of the meeting and taking you guys late. Um, what's common, uh, young kids had a pretty overall traumatic experience of the pandemic, especially from poorer families. Um, a lot of those kids were shut in and neither really given an opportunity to socialize, nor really a chance to learn all that much. So consequently, there's a whole lot of trauma and they kind of K to two window in particular that's just taken most of the first half of this year to resolve and get students back on a, a learning track. So really consistently heard that from many of the different school sites that the first half was really re-acclimization to the school environment. And then the hope from the principals being that this, we're now in the second half of the year, that we, uh, have a chance to focus on the academics and move the ball forward there. So that was interesting to hear that pretty consistently, uh, across the board. Uh, is there overall sense of an increase in the number of special education students, uh, coupled, coupled with trouble finding enough sped teachers to, uh, cover? Um, I heard very varied opinions about whether a, a partial contributing component is over diagnosis or not. Um, so just want to put that out there that, um, that was something I heard. Very consistent love and, uh, uh, happiness working with NUA. Um, so a lot of shout outs for NUA, no negative comments at all, uh, even anonymously. So just people seem to really enjoy working with, uh, NUA. The work to reduce school suspensions, uh, through restorative justice practices has been successful. Uh, some of my initial skepticism of like, are you just not suspending students when you should have? Um, is actually seemingly negated by the data because there's also reduced classroom interruption. So it's not just having troublesome kids and keeping them in the classroom, but the level of trouble has been reduced effectively by the practices in the district. So like very, very neat to go, uh, see that. Lots of love for Liz's office. Uh, it's viewed as very caring, responsive and effective. Uh, that was, that was uniform. There's an awareness of the skepticism, uh, that exists in the community around Fontas and Penel and agreement for a need for a change in approach there, although it's a little uncertain. Well, what comes next? I mean, there's sort of a consensus that phonics needs to be more integrated in approach. A lot of sites are already hand cranking their own answers for how to better integrate phonics into the curriculum. But they are looking for sort of like better vetted answers for, for where to go to next. Measure U funds were spoken of with delight and pride, a lot of appreciation for the safety updates in particular that were included with measure T. Principals were very happy. The board member wanted to come and visit. So it's like certainly visits by board members are, are warmly welcomed. Uh, the climate surveys that we do are not given K to two, which is a bit of a miss since we have, um, pretty strong evidence that English proficiency by end of third grade is like really, really important. And we don't have, uh, the, all of the telemetry that we need for what's happening with kinder first and second, uh, students and their families. So I think that's a bit of a blind spot for us that we should think about how to, how to better cover. Um, MTSS also seems very well received across the district. It's a concrete and helpful framework. In some places the sobrato seal coaches are missed. Um, SIPS data doesn't do a great job showing progress according to our goals. You'll notice that's a, uh, theme I come back to often. Um, there is consensus that student enthusiasm about school is a big predictor of success, doing, uh, things like college campus tours and, and having fun and exciting classes like music, drama and the like are a big draw for school and help kids to identify as enjoying school. And there was some amount of consensus that those were things that, uh, helped to drive student performance. There are some things that were very different between the school sites. Uh, I thought that was interesting to notice. Uh, for some sites, uh, so te- teacher acquisition retention, some sites are really struggling to acquire teachers, to retain teachers. Um, some sites are not having problems with that. Um, I'm not going to call it particular sites, right? It's not about throwing people under the bus, but it's rather noting that this seems to be a meaningful difference between different sites. Um, so for some it was like their top issue and for others like, no, that's completely an on issue for us. Um, and that didn't vary directly in terms of like Bayside versus non-Bayside or any sort of clean line like that, that I could easily distinguish myself. Another one, uh, that was very varied was around teacher professional development. Some sites are really struggled to, uh, make sure that, uh, teachers were, uh, actually attending all the different professional development sessions that were being made available for them. Others had no problem at all, uh, where with teachers even like volunteering to go and do extra, uh, professional development time and like, so it was a big difference, right? So it wasn't like there was one clear picture I was getting on that. And then just actually touring a bunch of the classrooms, the individual teaching styles in the classrooms varied, uh, very dramatically. Everything from impassioned lectures from, you know, really super engaged teachers where I like, I didn't want to leave the classroom. I wanted to see what was going on next. Uh, so pretty amazing stuff too. You know, honestly, like some people just kind of, uh, reading into a microphone and like not really engaging the students. So there's a lot of dynamic range, I think, that was being experienced by teachers out there. Also feelings about school lunch varied. So, um, in terms of broad needs and notes, uh, SIPS is apparently used to be done in May. Um, and now the timing of them October, November makes it difficult to evaluate the past year and plan for the upcoming year. I'm new to a lot of this stuff. So I'm just trying to like relay and be a funnel for what I heard on the sites. Uh, the district needs to source more bus drivers. The shortages there are causing logistical issues as well as safety ones when they put together, uh, kids all the way from like kindergarten up to eighth grade. Um, so they, they would like more bus drivers. Uh, the big survey sent out twice a year isn't quite enough to gauge how efforts are making progress on a more month to month basis. So it'd be good to have, uh, some, uh, faster, shorter surveys to get some telemetry on how things are developing during the year. Something you heard tonight, need more integrated ELD curriculum. That was pretty, uh, consistent. Um, there also seems to be a bit of a consensus that while a lot of parents enjoy having a kinder to eight environment, it's actually probably better for kids to have a true middle school and to have like a separate K to five from six to eight. And then some of the people who related that feedback didn't want their names attached to the feedback, but like, that was actually a fairly consistent, uh, uh, opinion that I felt like it's my role to go and surface that kind of stuff. Um, some of the new and planned constriction, uh, construction did not fully incorporate feedback from the principals. And this resulted in a little bit of a miss in terms of maximally useful facilities. So as a, a specific example that at TAFT, the furniture for the steam room was not appropriately sized for most of their students. It was way too big. Similarly, on the other direction, there's a conference room table that was much too short to be useful. It was kind of comically small, right? Um, and so, and then the art tables weren't the right size and just like they, they, they weren't really consulted about the new, about the furniture and about the construction that was going in there. Uh, similarly at Clifford, the, uh, hypothesized plans for measured S spending, uh, include a bunch of new classroom construction, moving things around that didn't make sense to the principal. And he wasn't really consulted on plans beyond a single brief meeting, right? So just, I want to make sure that if we're doing big, amazing, cool, expensive construction projects for a given site that we're, uh, working in close consultation with the, the principal and the staff on site to make sure that it's maximally effective. And it's the right furniture. It's the right setup. It's going to best serve, uh, their students. A handful of just like quick hits here. I swear I'm towards the end of the list, but this is like to 12 separate visits that I did. So I'm just trying to condense it all into one. Uh, Connect Charter Schools heater has been out. It was very cold in the office. They are all bundled up. Um, so it'd be nice to figure out if we can, uh, fix that. Roosevelt's playground needs additional wood chips to make the surface safe from falls. The, um, chip depth was, was not deep enough to be safe. Taft's playground field, uh, is, is unusable. It, it, they haven't been able to use their field at all. It needs resurfacing. So these are some things that.
City thing. Yeah.
Cool. Let's just find a way to surface it to the city. It's like, cause that was kind of.
The city does know about it. The city knows about it. So.
If I could prod them, that'd be great.
I'll talk to Melissa. See what we can do.
Cool. Um, and then, uh, finally some, some hopes for the district, uh, metacognition. Uh, so we got a lot of nods around that. But, um, one thing that I think a lot of people started getting excited about when I jammed with them on this was this notion of a start of the year plan where the teacher and a parent and the student all get together to go and form, what is your learning plan for the year? Not responsively to the first report card back and what are you going to do about XYZ bad grade? But rather proactively having the student form a plan and own a plan for the year. How are you going to go and learn this? And how can the parent and the teacher support you in your learning plan and really have that be owned by the student? I got a lot of nods and excitement about doing something like that. And we were top of February. It feels like the right time to be having conversations about how are you going to kick off the school year in the fall, right? So it's, it's not too early, not too late. It feels like good timing to start thinking about that. There was also excitement about encouraging parents to communicate high expectations to their kids. So I think a lot of what parents feel yelled about is to engage more, to be on campus more and parents who are busy, they, they can't do that. They have a job. They have two jobs. Some of them have three jobs. Um, so giving them a toolbox of things they can do concretely with their kids that will move the needle academically for their kids that incorporate limitations around their time and their budget, I think would be really effective. And one of those things is encouraging parents to clearly communicate high academic expectations for their kids. There's some other things too. We should think about what we put in that toolbox. Last item, there was a lot of interest in, uh, ongoing review of pedagogy research to have our practices, what we're doing this district reflect what is known about what works and what not, or what, what doesn't work for humans learning. That was really long. So sorry. Uh, but like that was the overall, my first pass set of findings from touring all the schools in the district. Thank you for the audience.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to go?
Is that okay, Cecilia? Sure. Yeah. Couple of things to report. Um, I'm sure others will cover it too. The reclassification ceremony at Hoover was amazing. Um, you know, thank you, Lupe, John Michael, and all the Hoover staff. Um, you know, thank you, Lupe, John Michael, and all the Hoover staff, of course, for hosting us in that, that beautiful Hoover gym. Um, it was amazing. And congratulations to the teachers, the families and the students for the amazing effort that's gone into, um, reach that milestone. Um, I attended the Lunar New Year Festival over, uh, Ryan alternative. I brought my high school senior and we got to eat, uh, some delicious dumplings, see a lion dance and watch some student performances. That was fun. We had a bond team meeting, um, and the one thing to share out of that is that we were hoping, um, that in our next meeting, uh, we'll be able to start discussing the remaining measure T funds and being able to prioritize projects. So that's something that'll be coming to the board after that, um, in the March, April timeframe. But if you've heard of things that, um, you know, are, are small projects that might be able to use for that, um, start thinking about this so that we can get them onto the prioritized list to think about. Uh, we have the citizen, uh, speaking of measure T, we had a citizens bond oversight committee on Thursday. And, uh, I saw the Little Mermaid Junior opening night performance on Friday from Clifford. And that was, uh, that was great. And I brought my high school freshman who was in a virtual version of Little Mermaid Junior when she was at Kennedy during the pandemic.
All right. Um, yeah. So we had a, Cecilia and I went to a Redwood City Together meeting. And that was Cecilia's first. Um, so that was good. And even trying to think of what we, I think we were mostly getting updates and stuff. So there's not a lot to, to report back, but there's a lot going on with Redwood City Together. That's for sure. Actually, actually the big thing is I, I just came back to me. Um, we did bring on, um, two new partners. And what's really cool about that is the Chan Zuckerberg Institute is actually paying for their membership on the leader organization. So two great things, Redwood City Together will get more money, uh, to be able to support our youth and families. But then also we'll get the perspective from the two new groups. Well, actually one of them is the John Gardner Center from Stanford. That'll be, they'll be continuing. And then the other is the, um, Community College. What's the, the name of the upward scholars? Thank you. Yeah. So that'll be good. So that'll help us go from, um, cradle to career because we were sort of missing some of that community college kind of support. And that's really focused on actually a lot of our families who are learning English and wanting to go back to school. So that was good. Um, I, uh, was a part of the San Mateo County new board orientation. I was there to talk about C S B A and just training opportunities. And we had a really good turnout. There's a lot of new board members in San Mateo County. And actually, um, I just got back from C S B A board meeting a couple of weekends ago. And there are just a lot of new board members up and down the state and we're expecting even more the next cycle. So I think we're going to see a lot of, um, opportunities for additional training and, uh, we're going to see a lot of changes on school boards as well. Cause there's a lot of people coming in with, uh, variety of ideas of what we ought to be doing with education. So I think it's going to be a challenging few years, actually. Um, in some regard, but it's also great to of course, get new folks like David. Um, okay. Uh, I, I sat on a Brown Act panel and there was a Brown Act training. It was a virtual training and actually both Cecilia and I attended all day. So that was, or all morning. And that was put on by D W K. And I think they did a really good job. And I feel like I always learn something about the Brown Act. Uh, what is that? Oh, yeah. Sorry. That's the reclassification. I did want to give a shout out to all the staff and just, um, the teachers, the principals and everybody who really helps those kids. We know how important it is to have them reclassified. And then I have joined the C S B A annual education conference committee. We had our kickoff meeting last week and we have a lot of meetings coming up. So if you have any ideas of things that went well, or things that you'd like to see additional, it's going to be in San Francisco this year, which is great. So everybody should be able to attend. Um, from a travel perspective, it'll be a lot easier for us. So please pass any ideas that you have to me, like things that, you know, are sort of buzzing around that you'd like to have workshops on, or if you know of good speakers, um, general session speakers or others, I would welcome that and I can relay that information. Let's see Janet and John and I had a workforce housing meeting. There's a lot going on there and, uh, we're going to be hearing some news and we'll probably be having another closed session soon, right?
Yeah.
We'll have to figure that out. And then we had a board policy committee meeting. Okay. I know. Well, there was a lot. I think we've been gone for three weeks. So sorry for that long explanation.
That's great.
Great.
A lot of mine have been mentioned, the bond and C B O C workforce housing policy committee. Um, John and I went to the chamber education committee meeting. Um, and then the reclassification ceremony is always, um, one of my favorite events. So I was really happy to have that back in person and um, thanks to everyone who put that together. That was wonderful.
On the chamber, was it mostly updates or was there anything?
I have to call in by phone now and I, it was.
Let me see if I can find that. Yeah. Sorry to delay. I just, um,
I'm, I listen in from my car when I'm
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, if you don't remember off the top of your head, there probably wasn't any, you know, sometimes there's things going on there. That's you know what? Don't worry about it. You can tell me later.
It's okay.
I don't think there's anything significant though.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
I'm realizing I forgot to thank, uh, C T A, uh, where, yeah, Erin Washburn graciously invited me to the C T A hosted breakfast, uh, for new trustees. It was a very nice event and I got to know Erin a lot better and got to chat with some folks from C T A.
That's awesome.
So yeah, thank you to C T A and for all of our hardworking teachers.
Yeah, I was gone. So I wasn't able to go, but I, I'm glad that you were able to attend. That's awesome.
Um, and then for me, of course, some of the things have been mentioned, um, you know, the road city together, the brown act with Alyssa, which by the way, um, obviously you always learn something new. So that was actually very helpful. And I do want to thank you publicly because you do such an amazing job at attending all this committee. Um, you know, so I really appreciate that. Um, and you did fabulous on the panel. Um, and so with that said, there are some things that I learned that maybe, you know, I don't know if we're aware. And then talk about the brown act and not violating. I'm wondering if, um, talking about putting some stuff on the agenda for future agenda would be, so let me make the comment and then we can, you guys can help me out, figure out if that is what we want to do. So one of the things they emphasized was again, to be consistent on the time allowed for public comment. So as we experienced tonight, when there's a lot of people. Yeah. Right. Um, and so they did recommend that we would, um, it would be good to, if we put it on the front of our agenda. Um, so that would be one thing. And then for public comment. Yeah.
Put our minutes. So, yeah.
Yeah. And so nobody gets surprised.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and then let's see. Obviously, and to also write down, it would be good suggestion that we do not engage in conversation. Cause again, people can see things that we are being rude. Cause again, we're telling them your time is over and we can't answer any questions. But later on, again, whether it's a superintendent or a designee, or one of the board members would get back to them. And then, um, let's see. Uh, another thing they said is on the rationale or the background of the agenda item, it would be good to disclose that when we're talking about an item, we also mentioned like a previous meeting and dates so that people are actually aware of, like when we actually talked about it in the past. So that's what I learned on the workshop. So I want
Can respond to a comment though, when appropriate.
Yeah.
To just appropriate.
Clarifying questions, I think.
When appropriate, respond to community comments. So like tonight, that's why I wanted to say, and that's why I wanted to say for those parents who did send in emails and I returned emails and you received the responses, you were copied on them. They would have a response by the end of the workday on Friday.
Okay.
So I highlighted that because just in case that would come out, it's a very good book to read. I don't know if you have it or not, but I think they send one to every C S B A member.
Great. Thank you.
So we can comment, but you just leave it short and sweet.
Okay. Um, let's see. So moving on, oh, actually something to report from you.
Everything's been mentioned except for the lunar new year activity that was last week on Saturday that I attended with a lot of the it was a win and a rain. Kids did a great job though. Kids did a great job and the parent, it was mainly, and my parents that were there. Yeah. Yeah. That's it.
Okay. So, um, information item thirteen point one, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. No. Okay. Uh, moving on with correspondence. I know that we did get a lot of emails from, and my parents. Anything else?
I think it's just, I, I want to make sure that for the folks who are still tuned in, it's great to see such community passion and engagement. And the board hears you loud and clear. So this is how democracy works. Thank you for your comments. Really appreciate them.
Okay. So item fifteen, other business suggested items for future agenda.
Yeah. I wanted to ask, and I'm glad, uh, Mike, you brought up, uh, the bond committee tonight in your report about you're looking at, uh, kind of a list of some of the smaller projects that we might be funding with the reserve money that we have. And, um, I was wondering, I'm not sure exactly what the thinking is for the process, but I was hoping that, um, the bond committee could make recommendations, but that the board publicly, like we could see all of the, the list of items. And then your recommended items, because as a, you know, through conversation or public comment, we might shift things a little bit. So, okay. Good. Cause I think there has been sometimes where something comes to us and we didn't get to, you know, so I just want to make sure that we get to see that. So
It's, it's a list and then you will have input in prioritizing.
Great. Perfect.
And I believe, um, Mike and Janet, that's what, uh, Will said, there's nothing that's prioritized at this point in time. It's just a list.
Okay. Great.
So making sure that there isn't anything else to get on that list and then you'll have whatever the balance is.
Right. And then we have to make some decisions and, and part of the reason is actually under correspondence, in addition to the Mandarin immersion, um, emails that came in, I'm also starting to get emails about or phone calls. Because people have, I think, submitted things and they know like, when is it going to happen? And how are you making the decision? Is the public going to see that? And so I do think it's important just as we wrap up to
Because I think a couple of you have been involved with a school site in regard to a playground.
Yeah. So there's, and it's not just them. There's a few others. So, and then of course we just heard about the hinges in the tetherball court. So I don't know if those are on.
Those are
I mean, the hinges are small, the tetherball court.
Back order.
Okay. Anyway.
But I don't know about the tetherball.
Okay. So if it's not on a list somewhere, maybe we could put that
That should be on the list.
Yeah. Let's look at the tetherball and the measure T leftover list. I mean, there's a lot, you know, we may be able to accomplish a lot of, anyway, we don't, I guess that's getting to the agenda. I just want to make sure that it's
Right.
That it comes to us so we can see it and have a conversation. Thank you. And, and I do appreciate all the bond committee. If you guys want to delve deeper and make recommendations, certainly I would appreciate that. However, you know, okay. Thank you.
And, uh, just to formally say, i- if things do not, if, if we don't have a bow on everything by Friday, close of business, if there are things that the board needs to discuss and decide on vis a vis, uh, what's happening with TKK and wait listing and all, it's possible everything will be wrapped up. Um, but we're that
I need to have a meeting with you and Janet. I need to have a meeting. I still have my, to have my meeting with Cecilia on Friday and I probably have to go back to Alyssa, even though we've already had it.
I just want to make sure that i- if that doesn't wrap to, uh, some sort of satisfying decisive close, like that, that probably should be given the matter of time here, uh, placed into the in, in agenda for, for discussion at, at the next meeting so that we get timely answers done. Now possibly we'll, we'll get everything wrapped up. That would be fantastic. But I just want to say like, and, and if it doesn't, then that, that may need to come as a formal agendized item.
My goal is to get it wrapped up.
Let's get it wrapped up. Yeah.
Right. And I actually think, I mean, through this conversation, um, you know, if we need to, we can get enrollment back on an agenda item later, um, enrollment policy. I mean, I think some of that would probably go to the policy committee first and then it will come to us. But you know, for those maybe who are still listening or will share the information with friends. You know, I, I think, um, you know, part of the issue is that the TK is new. And so we just need to reflect upon, we've always had the sibling policy with K through eight. The TK has not always been offered at every school site. It was really just, hey, where we had spots, you know, whether you were at Orion and there was an opening, you know, we were doing it like that. Now that we've got one at every school site and possibly more, it, it just changes it. So, so typically the process would be it go to the board policy committee and then it'll come to us. But I do think we have some work to do on the enrollment and lottery and not just what we heard tonight, but we've been hearing that, you know, and as we've been changing and evolving, we always have to refresh those. So we can put those on the agenda as needed as well.
Cool. I just want to make sure that nobody ends up falling through the cracks as we decide a good long-term policy, what happens with people who are on the wait, waitlist right now to be attendant to their urgency and time and needing to get that solved. And it sounds like we've got
Well, I know that
Stuff landing.
Worked hard on it.
Yeah. I didn't answer any emails today. I didn't have, I didn't have time.
So moving on to, um, next agenda item, board meeting calendar. Are there any changes?
I don't have any changes. You all have what we're doing firm, with the exception of, uh, that we made a change to date. Next board meeting, which should be next week, Alyssa, from tonight, you will get three reports because we have to take Orion off.
And what's the status on the, uh, remote meetings? Cause it did, did we have an emergency meeting on that? So like just
The remote meetings?
Uh, in, in terms of having people being able to zoom in versus the
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So it, you come March, it's going to be a hundred percent local again with no zooming in or
We And that's one thing I'm trying to clarify with, with Carol, who Lauren Carroll, who's our new attorney from county council. There are three, the first one's gone as of February twenty eighth.
Right.
Uh, regarding board members and, and you know, we have to have you here or you have two meetings that you can be away and it can be virtual, but you open up your hotel door, your home at home and it's supposed to agenda. But there is still one piece that I need further clarification from her, and that's the last piece in regard to the, um, virtual hybrid piece, which we are still, which we all retract it. We at one time when we started said, we wanted to keep this going. A lot of our, a lot of our school districts in San Mateo County are not doing it. They want it all in person and you come here. But we had made that decision. This is before you, David, uh, that we wanted to go hybrid. And I haven't deviated from that. So I need to probably take a pulse and this is not the time to do it because it's not agendized.
Yep. So maybe this is a good item for
So it'll be something for a future agenda. Yeah.
And okay. It's just like, uh, end of February is not that far away. It's 20 days away. So
Correct. Well, I, I know as far as you are concerned, you can, um, definitely, and I'll send you the guidelines of what it says in regard to missing a meeting, what the criteria is. But then it can only be two meetings from what I understand that that can happen to. And I, I, I
Okay.
I still have questions about that with, with, uh, Lauren. I go, that doesn't make sense. What if the
Okay. I just, I like saw on the same page.
Cover that in our
Oh, they did.
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Well, why don't
But I would check the legal too, because you know.
They were the legal though.
I can tell you what I learned.
I just want to make sure that we, we understand what the rules are and that the public understands what, what the rules are. Okay. Great.
But I will put that on probably. Yeah.
And then for me, just a reminder, since we're on board meetings calendar, there is a closed session next week at five thirty. And the meet, the regular meeting actually starts at six thirty and that's already on the website.
Yeah. Please do try to hold that or we should need to hate that because everybody is so used to a start time of seven. Yes.
Next week, everybody. Yeah.
With that, can I please get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
They're moved.
Seconded.
Rockwell, please.
Uh, trustee Wells. Oh, sorry. Trustee Weekly.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Vice President Lawson.
Aye.
President Marcus.
Aye. Thank you very much.